That's you.
All right.
You're next, yeah.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We have met compliance with official notifications. We'll call.
All right, it's me tonight. Steve Olson.
Here.
Ed Gallagher, I am here. Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Steve Stufak.
Here.
Laura Gapski.
Yeah.
Michael Meyer. President Albrecht.
Here.
Everyone's here.
Thank you. At this time, would everybody please join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the meeting is a meeting of support education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment signup sheet and handing it front to the deputy clerk. Comments should be focused on the items being considered by the board and should be restricted to no more than three minutes at length. And action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. With that, an entertaining motion for disposition of minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve, second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll move into the report of the superintendent. We've got four informational items. First is the twenty twenty-two guest teacher of the year award.
All right, well, we have a guest teacher of the year here tonight, Susie Spindler. I want to talk just a little bit about Susie and a little bit about the award we want to share tonight. So this is something new that we started this school year. We worked really hard to try to attract and retain substitute teachers. Ever since, and we've always struggled, but I think COVID and the pandemic has created another layer of complications for us. And so we've worked really hard, but this is one thing that we thought would be important, that we recognize our substitute teachers or our guest teachers that come into our schools every day. We had a nomination form submitted out to all of our staff, and we had over thirty guest teachers nominated, which was really cool. It was challenging to try to decide who to pick because we had so many wonderful nominations, but Susie rose to the top pretty quickly. And so I want to just share a little bit about some of the comments. This is just a few of the comments, so many that we received. It says, Susie has been extremely flexible during a difficult situation. She's asked to fill in for an indefinite period of time, perhaps a couple of days or perhaps until the end of the school year. She agrees to all terms, knowing that the duration of her position is unknown, and she's been invaluable in difficult situations with what she has presented and does an amazing job. She's highly conscientious, shows up early to ensure that she's prepared for the day to learn the curriculum, and we're so lucky to have her as a guest teacher. She helps out at any position, and she's been flexible in her schedule. If she needs assistance or clarification, she'll take the initiative to find out the information she needs. She's selfless, compassionate, and brings a contagious positive energy wherever she's working. And one of the things that we gravitated to really quickly when we saw her nomination was, you are willing to go anywhere, do anything across all levels of this organization, which is pretty awesome. I think Sue even shared with me that you'll step into summer school or help out however is needed. So thank you so much. We have many, many staff who recognized you and appreciated you. I've had many just reach out to me personally, too. I know your time at Cooper this spring was so appreciated as well. So thank you.
Probably the most impressive. She did L T S for Sam or Jim. I think people would think, oh, P E, usually we still play games. It isn't.
I'm struck.
But I want to give her all the props for stepping into that stretch, and she worked with some of the other P E teachers.
Yeah, so we have a very cool award to give you. It was like, there's like a stand and everything in here. So there's. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, good photo, maybe.
Need a photo? Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. I'll take my gang and leave.
Is there a speech?
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, Susie.
Hey, guys.
All right. Moving on with the informational items. At the committee of the whole meeting on June sixth, Principal Liebert's shared updates from Cooper Elementary School and Principal Flaherty shared updates from Spear High School. Also at the committee of the whole on June sixth, Dominic Mattson, who's our CISA twelve administrator, shared an overview of the CISA twelve, along with some of the services CISA twelve provides to us. And also the high school teachers, Adam Coleman and Spike Graluski, shared presentation on the Spark Manufacturing and their vision of what the Spark Manufacturing could become. I know they visited a number of companies throughout.
And they're still visiting. I don't think they've stopped yet.
Okay, I visited them last Thursday. Again. Got a couple of action items. One of them's a new action item, the first one. And that's the consideration of updated board meeting schedule for the twenty-two, twenty-three. School year action item tonight will be final approval. Proposed change is the January regular board meeting, which was January sixteenth, and that'd be moving into January twenty-third. And it's due to the sixteenth being Martin Luther King Junior holiday and the twenty twenty-three State Education Convention dates seventeen through twenty.
Yes, so I think Steve pointed this out to us that that original date we had on the calendar was when we actually took for the convention. And so there'll be a couple of weeks between the COW and the regular board meeting that month. So unless there's any concerns about that, we thought that would probably be a better update for our January meeting.
Move to approve.
Back in.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Next, the committee recommends designation of Casey Smith as interim deputy clerk effective June ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Backdating this one.
Should wait to see how she does tonight.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And I believe that concludes the report. All right, with that, move into the board committee reports, starting off with policies and rules. We have an action item, and the committee recommends approval of the revised student code of conduct as attached. Committee of the whole meeting on June sixth, the Safe and Responsive Schools Task Force made a presentation regarding the recommendation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items. One in from the final items, we have a presentation of S R O twenty-one, twenty-two program evaluation by Captain Wintershade from the Spear Police Department today.
Thanks for coming. I'll tee it up a little bit for you some, okay? So last year, we revised our S R O policy, and one of the things that we had put in our policy was to do an annual update on a variety of different points from our S R O program. You oversee our S R Os and we work closely together. So thanks for coming tonight.
All right, yeah, thanks for the introduction. I really appreciate it. So this is our first run at this report. It's kind of like to learn from it and see what items you might like to see in the future. So if there are ideas for additional information items that you'd like to see in the future, please let me know. I'm also prepared for questions, so I'm sure this will generate some. So go ahead. So article number thirteen of our M O U again asks for a update on the S R O program, basically looking for our progress towards the stated objectives of the S R O program. Last year, we, as we entered the school year with this new M O U, we really re-focused, focused on having our police officers who are in the schools not be there for disciplinary issues. Take a look at that list. We can actually advance one. All right. So it's really important to us to redefine the role of an S R O from a disciplinary entity in the schools to a protective entity. Now, the police officers are there to protect people, just like in the community. Police officers are there to protect people. Sometimes we protect people from each other, sometimes we protect people from themselves, and that translates to the school as well. So as officers are interacting with students or deciding to take action in a specific situation, they have to kind of evaluate, hey, is this a law enforcement issue? Am I protecting a student either from each other or from themselves? And is law enforcement action appropriate? We want to improve communication between S R O, school administrators, members of the public, parents, student groups, everybody, all the work group members within the school, we want to improve communications because communications improve understanding and it improves effectiveness. We wanted to integrate the S R O into the school community through participation in faculty and student meetings, classroom settings, et cetera, maintain activity reports, fairly thorough activity report to kind of go through. And we wanted to focus on some training opportunities with our S R O. Really, the training opportunities take two forms. One is things like de-escalation training, implicit bias training, which we give to all members of our police departments while not just S R Os. The other is active shooter training, critical incident response training, not just active shooters, but critical incident response. And that, again, goes for the entire police department. We know statistically that if there's an active shooter event at the high school or the middle school, there's a likelihood, strong likelihood, it's not only fifty percent chance that our S R O will be killed. We know that. So we know that all of our officers in the city have to be prepared to respond in the same way. So some of the training, I just broke down into two areas. Training completed by S R Os is the stuff that we've done in the last year. It doesn't include all the training we've done before, but it includes all the training you've done in the last year. We did active bystandership for law enforcement. That was a department-wide training initiative, and that's a basically a peer support officer wellness and prevent people from making mistakes or a train. So it's been super valuable. We're actually one of the early adopters of that program. It's a nationwide program put out by Georgetown Law. I'm really happy with it. Currently, the S R Os, actually this week, they're attending the NASRO training conference. So there they receive two and a half days straight of high-quality training related to school resource duties. That includes things like social media threat assessments, interacting with students with like previous trauma, those sorts of things. So that's what we're really good at. Completed social media threat assessment training, training column lessons with Columbine, again, in the hopes to learn from these previous incidents to make our responses more effective, should we need that. Classes on addressing homeless populations. Now, that may not, you know, some of this stuff may not directly relate to S R O duties, but all of this stuff relates to the things that a police officer does. Opioid response training, crisis response training, and of course, our regular department firearms and defensive tactics training. Going into the summer, as we prepare for the beginning of the fall of the year, these are the things planned training that we are hoping to do this summer. So we're going to do active shooting response again to the law enforcement. It's been a couple of years since we've done department-wide training. We have a lot of new officers, and it's time to bring that back. Obviously, the evolving Texas incident really reminds us that these things can happen anywhere. That was a town of fifteen thousand people. Much smaller town than Superior, and these things obviously happen anywhere. Rescue Task Force, if you're not familiar, Rescue Task Force is a collaboration between the police department and the fire department to provide immediate critical care, stabilizing care to people who are wounded in a or an active shooter event or really sort of any mass casualty incident. And it seeks to get people out of the school and into the trauma center faster than we previously were able to do that. We do that collaboratively with the fire department. We're really interested in threat assessment training. There's a lot of good research out there that we can use to really identify threats before they kind of explode. So if we can identify things before they become a problem and take action, that's obviously what we prefer. So actually, Mike Kendall is spearheading that. Our standard department training, again, our department as a whole prioritizes quality training. We're going to do the NASRO conference against, again, next year. And as part of that NASRO conference, my plan is to send our collateral S R Os to that. And if you're not familiar with collateral S R Os, we have our two primary school resource officers. Last year, we initiated, it was a year and a half ago, we initiated this collateral S R O program. So we solicited officers on the department who are maybe interested in becoming S R Os eventually, had an interest in developing the program, and invited them to be like part-time fill-in S R Os when our primary S R Os are out. So those officers receive the same training that our regular school resource officers do. And we also, they show interest in it, so that's always good. So some of the statistics we're looking at here, these numbers go back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. This is just calls for service at these addresses. Now, some of the things to remember about this is these numbers are not just during the school day, right, and not just during the school year. So if there's a suspicious person in the parking lot of any of the schools during the summer, they'll show up in this list. If there's an alarm, they'll show up in this list. If there's a traffic stop in front of the school, the school is homed as the address, it'll show up on this list. So this list, while the numbers look fairly high, they can be a little overrepresented. We'll get into some of those other numbers. Cyphas. Cyphas are self-initiated field activity. So many times our officers are requested to stop in at the school, say a hi, have lunch. Plenty of our officers do. These numbers represent that. Now, I can say, I can tell you confidently, these numbers underrepresent the true efforts of our officers because a lot of times they'll stop in, they'll have lunch, and they won't pull a cypher number. But you can see it does happen. We do spend quite a bit of time in the schools beyond what our school resource officers put in. So these are arrests. Now, I want to say that arrests, obviously within the school, but within law enforcement in general, are something we try to avoid. I'll turn it up a little bit, leaving what you might see in movies. Police officers don't go out with the hope of, I need to arrest somebody, really wreck their day to day. That's not the case at all. We actually, many agencies, including our department, have a alternative to arrest, like, it's not a policy, but it's kind of like a philosophy. If we can find some alternative to either citation or to arrest to correct the behavior, but you don't have continued violations of the law, that's the route we take. Our police department as a whole, we have pathways to hope. There's a pre-arrest or diversion program. So we do try to make an arrest, try to avoid making an arrest possible. Sometimes it's just not possible. So here we can see C A A is adult arrest, C J A is juvenile arrest. So an adult arrest, according to Wisconsin law, an adult is seventeen and up when it comes to arrests. That's not something the police department has the power to change. That's just what it is. That's Wisconsin law. Juvenile arrest would be anything under that. This would include things like ordinance citations, both on the adult and juvenile side. So you can see, this is, by the way, I didn't label this here, but this is actually last year's numbers. So these are the most recent numbers that we have. When we're looking at the juvenile arrests, we can see that a good chunk of those, if we look here, J, yeah, here we go. The total is sixty-two juvenile arrests at the high school. Of those, forty-three were truancy. Truancy is kind of a weird thing, right? In Wisconsin, truancy is a law enforcement issue. So if there's a truancy issue either with a student or the parent, that gets referred to the police, and the police send it up to health services, and they do their thing. That's something that isn't the same in other states. I'm not saying I agree with it or disagree with it. It's beyond my pay grade to decide that. It's just the way it is for us. It's what we do, deal with. So when we look at, it's, I think, important to look at those C J A numbers and recognize that a significant majority of those deal with truancy. Those are laid out statute. I'll go in advance. All right, so arrests by type. Arrests by type. Let's see, we have a total of one hundred and thirty-seven. When we focus on the C J A, the juvenile arrests, it's clear juvenile arrests is what the acronym stands for. And we can see that eleven are battery, eleven are disorderly conduct, ten are miscellaneous juvenile offenses. Quite honestly, I can't tell you what those are right now because I tried to figure it out. I don't know what the code does.
Oh, this is last year, right? I guess. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, this just woke me up last fall. Ordinance violations, but again, look at truancy, that's. We're talking about the battery, disorderly conduct. Those are most likely school fights that resulted in somebody's injury that are significant. While we talk about the cleared adult arrests, we can see that there is one battery in there. Now, one battery by an adult in a school might, it might seem insignificant, like it was a fight in the school, but like, that's a significant event. When somebody batters another person in one of our schools, that's a significant event. And to even see one on there, I think, is actually kind of surprising.
Did you say that if it happened at the high school and they're eighteen, they're considered adult, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it could be a student at the high school?
Yeah, it could be an older student. There's two disorderly conducts, six ordinance violation, and again, twenty-four truancy. So the overwhelming majority of even the adult arrests in all the schools relate to truancy.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Does this count for like events? Like if we have a football game and there's teams from other cities or things like that?
Yeah.
So that'll all be, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not saying that's happened. I just, anybody on the premise says could.
Yeah, absolutely. Makes sense. All right, that's it for that. Can you pull up that Excel spreadsheet? All right. And go to that second tab. All right, for me. All right, so Mike Kendall provided me these numbers. The guy keeps a lot of numbers. He provided me all these before he went to his conference, and then I sat on the phone with him for a minute and hour a day having to walk me through it. You can see again a breakdown of the numbers here that we went over. You can see a breakdown, cyphas by month. Wintertime, the officers are visiting the schools a little bit more. Again, I think those numbers are obviously underrepresented, but it should work out. If you actually scroll down, if you guys look at the left side of the screen here, we keep a list of every incident number, every type of violation, the officer, the date, how it was disposed, and the location of it. So we do keep record of that. That information is obviously shared with the schools. They can scroll down. You can get a sense of kind of what the officers are dealing with there. Now, you'll notice there's a lot more incidents there than arrests because officers don't always, they're actually very rarely making arrests in the case. We would prefer not to refer somebody to the criminal justice system if we can help it. And that goes for in the schools and on the street. We look for alternatives to have.
All on the truencies. So there's a city ordinance.
Yep.
And then there's a state, and I was just watching, just to see how many Jeff had had to write. So those are initiated by the administration, either an assistant principal or the principal. So when is it determined that it goes from city ordinance to state?
I'm not.
By numbers?
I believe it is by whether it's a.
The number of days.
It's like after it hits a certain number, that's a bigger issue.
We have a, we have a different flow chart that kind of there's different agencies that we might, like, we might involve the county, we might move to a court situation. There's a variety of situations. Sometimes it depends on the circumstances, too.
Was there still the court proceedings, like if Mr. Ponco had to go bi-weekly or whatever to meet with?
I believe so.
Okay.
So we found that our truancy ordinance in the state system, it gives a little bit of tea. Sometimes when people get that letter to the mail, they tend to respond a little bit better. And I don't know, has truancy in the schools improved in the last year?
But I will say, I will say that one of the things that we did difference this year was we employed an elementary social worker. Her primary job is to oversee truancy prevention because our S R O at the elementary, really the primary things that he did at the elementary level tended to be more truancy focused, and it was reactive, not preventative. So the goal is to identify barriers for students when they're in elementary school, develop good habits of attendance so that when they moved to the middle school and the high school, we've developed those habits because it starts early, like in kindergarten. And so we did see, I want to say, just, I don't have data to support my statement, but I would say that we saw more truancy this year at the middle school level than we had in previous. Is that accurate? We talked about, yeah. So I know that was an issue.
Our S R Os, I can tell you, our S R Os would rather not see truancy go through the criminal justice system. Again, that's we need the students to go to school, but at the same time, I don't know that it's the S R O's role to do that, but we work with what we got. So we gotta do what we got. So they'll continue to do that, but if there are creative ideas for improving what our officers do, we certainly will do that.
Well, and they're also, it's helpful from a team perspective. It might mean that if it goes to a county situation that we're advocating for mental health supports or other supports that might be interfering. So this kind of depends on the situation as to what route makes the most sense for our students. Yeah.
You know, we had a lot of really heavy, I think, digital students faster than I ever remember this year. I think it was the bad habits coming off the pandemic. And we would be referring to the county, and they would intervene. And if that wasn't working, they would get support orders. So I mean, the county kind of took that to not even need to become a poor situation. So I'm optimistic it'll be better this year, though, because we're probably going to come off a normal summer and you won't have all the COVID. You know, reading this, our goals for the coming year. You've already really demonstrated a problem, right? We don't know, I like to preface this by saying, we don't really know at this point what happened. There's a lot of information that's come out, a lot of information that's officially. I think until the final reports are out and the debriefs are done, we just don't know. It did raise some questions about what we're able to do. We imagine there is a shooter at a school. I wasn't badgering when I said statistically, there's a fifty-fifty chance that our S R O is going to be killed at school. That's something they've signed up for. They recognize that. We train to go in. We won't wait. We won't wait for three people to show up before we go in. We won't wait for five people to show up. We'll go in, and we will keep going in until the shooter's dead or we have more. And we'll keep doing that. And then we're going to bring in other agencies, and we're going to bring in a lot of people. Fortunately, that all takes time. We know that if I were to give this presentation ten years ago, say that, you know, most of these school shootings are committed with handguns or, you know, weapons that we're not seeing used in school shootings today. We are seeing significant weaponry used in school shootings. It's more often to see a long gun in a school shooting than not. My pistol, I'm a fire instructor. I like shooting. Not a fantastic shot with a pistol in a crowded hallway. That's not practical. Though I can tell you that these are some uncomfortable topics, but I think it's important to be honest and kind of understand what our kind of like. In Wisconsin, we train our officers, before they take the shot, they have to identify their target, make sure they're shooting the right thing. They have to acquire their target, so they got to be able to hit it. And they got to isolate their target. They got to know what's beyond it, try not to hit. That's where that ends, with school shooting. We don't isolate our target. There's a school shooter and a target, and that school shooter is, there's a backdrop of children behind that school shooter. and that school shooter is, there's a backdrop of children behind that school shooter, our officers are trained to take the shot. They might miss, right? But the danger of not taking action outweighs the danger of taking action. I'm going to ask the school board now to give our officers, I want your, I want your support for it. We got to give our officers the tools they need in school to face the threats that we're facing today. With a patrol rifle, they could take a much more accurate shot. These patrol rifles don't need to be, you know, carried around the school or anything like that, but honestly, I prefer that nobody even knows they're in the school. But it's not acceptable for our officers, one, to be expected to run into a hail of gunfire from somebody who outguns them without a reasonable chance of success. I got families, I got four kids in these schools. It's unreasonable task for officers to go on a suicide mission against an overgunned person. So what I'm asking, and we visited this back in two thousand and sixteen, but we're just, it's different now. We need to give our officers the treats. I would like each of our SROs to have a safe installed in their office that secures a weapon in conspicuous way, gives them access to their patrol rifle. We know that in active shooter events, every fifteen seconds, somebody dies. It's going to take the officer two or three minutes to run out to their car, get their patrol rifle and run back in. That's a lot of people getting shot. Our officers need those tools. I'd also like to preposition some tactical supplies up at the schools in the same way, inconspicuously. Supplies, I'm talking about shields. I'm talking about rescue task force equipment. Several years ago, we had an officer involved shooting. One of our officers, a couple of our officers, actually had a shooting back, unfortunately, shot up seven times. I barely had enough tourniquets. I carry, when I'm working, I have one tourniquet on right now, but typically I carry three. A guy was shot seven times. I used to be a paramedic, so I jumped into action, throw a tourniquet on the guy, tape it up, second chest wound, seal it on that up. It didn't have me enough equipment to do it, like I would have preferred. So I'm asking that we preposition some of that stuff at the schools. The firing department would obviously support that. So we don't have to, imagine somebody gets shot, they're bleeding out. We don't have to go somewhere, get the equipment and bring it back. Those are the things we need. That's the initiative I'd like to see happen. You guys have any questions?
I was just searching while you were talking to see if we had any policies. I'm not seeing anything. I'm kind of looking to Len because that was before my time. Okay.
I remember when I came to the board back in sixteen.
Okay, okay.
It's a different environment now. I, I teach active shooter response to civilians, so I provide that course to companies across Superior, Douglas County, and up to Ashland. And for years, I'm like, well, you know, the active shooters, they tend to commit suicide upon first group, facing resistance. You know, they, this is typically what we see. It's been turned on its head in the last couple of years. Like I literally had to revise my presentation because things have changed. The world has changed. We need to figure out what is and what will be.
I mean, you and I can talk. We need to get it on as an agenda, you know, again.
Yeah, I mean, we spoke a little bit today and I, I support that personally about, you know, making sure, but we do know that it should come to the board and the board kind of supports that. It could be like an action item or.
As an agenda item, and then if you guys could put together another presentation like you did back in sixteen, but updated.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. That, that'd be good for everybody to see again.
You know, and to give you some perspective on what we'd be like, again, I would prefer that students never see the existence of. Safe here, the walls indicate that that exists.
Right. You know, they talked, when they talked about it originally, it was, it would be in its own safe that only the SR officer had a key to. It would have to be in a locked room that only the SR officer had a key to. You couldn't have like a, one of the windows on top of the door, you know what I'm saying? It had a completely secure, yeah, completely secure room. There were a lot of things that were talked about back then, even.
Yeah.
All the possibility.
It does make.
So twenty sixteen, it was turned down by the board?
And, you know, some of the other tactical equipment, having some rifle rated shields repositioned. So we have some of the station. But honestly, if there's an active shooter event, everybody's going to the school and somebody's going to have to run back to the station, grab it, bring it out. That's minutes.
That, that'd be a discussion of where you'd have to, where would those be placed? I guess that's a whole other topic.
And guess the R O office.
Okay, that's, which is dinner. I thought like the R O school or just in that office would be fine.
You know, I, in my active shooter classes, I, I taught one at Breach and Shipyard. I deal with a lot of ship, ship handling stuff. And we talked about the value of blue ear kits. So just like you have A D D's positioned over the rest of the school, you do blue ear kits, so they don't have to be anything conspicuous. But they have tourniquets in it, they have occlusive dressings, they have gloves, those sorts of things. You have to control major hemorrhage, control respiratory compromise, just the basics. That would be something fantastic to have prepositioned at strong points in the school. When I say strong point, in a very small, we would go in an active shooter event. So then you'd have access to that. The other, a lot of ideas have been tossed around, with the ideas that were tossed around was providing basic first aid training to teachers. Now, everybody gets first aid training, sure. But a tourniquet on, stop a second chest wound, those are very, very basic things that require a lot of training.
Thinking as you're talking there, but sixteen, the school was different than it is now, especially the, the high school. So I guess, and I think they had like, they showed like a footprint of the school and how they would do things. So it would have to be a whole different footprint now.
Absolutely.
So that'd be interesting to see how that would look.
Sure.
Got a couple things you're thinking outside of that?
Absolutely.
Um, one thing I did want to mention, you mentioned the trainings, but one of the changes we made in our policy last year was that SROs would participate in trainings with us. And they did attend last summer after we changed the conduct and we did some work around that. They attended our training last summer, which was really, they appreciated it. They appreciated being a part of those conversations and kind of being on the same team. It felt good. We've also worked very closely with them when it comes to threat assessment training. And so we've had staff at every building who are trained in threat assessment. Officer Kendall does help. He's a resource, I think, to all of our administrators and counselors when it comes to that. But he's been a good resource and we've done those trainings across all of our buildings too. So that's been a good partnership. I was sharing with him today also a little bit, one of my, and I, I plan to talk about this with principals at our upcoming principal meeting. One of the things I'm wondering about is do we need to revisit our, our visitor policies? I worry about the number of people who come into our schools. And I think we rely a lot on our front office secretaries to control that. And I don't know if that's fair on them to be able to, to manage that. We just went almost two years where we restricted visitors for a very important reason. And I just wonder if we need to revisit how people come into our schools. I don't know. That's a, it's a question. I don't have a, a possible procedure for that, but I am concerned about the volume that comes into schools and the open access that we have.
I agree. I, like I said, I have four kids that come to these schools, at two in the high school and a school in the Great Lakes. And I've gone there often, and must do. It's not hard to get into school. And I don't know what the perfect answer is to either because.
You want to be opening. You want to be open and welcoming, yeah.
Again, we live in a world now that's different than it was twenty years ago. It's, it's just different. And I wish it could not be different. I wish it was the same as it was, but it's not. You know, I, let's say fifty percent of the school resource officers are killed in an active shooter event. I guarantee you just about a hundred percent of your front office staff are killed. Because they're the first ones to encounter, so.
So it's about safety of our staff and our students. So we'll bring, if we, we change anything over the summer, we'll obviously bring that to the board, but it's on my mind, so.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so just, I know you said this training was just from this year. So I know that SROs are oftentimes doing that initial first response with kids. You know, I, I guess forensic interview training, updated, you know, ongoing, continuous education around that. I would like to see that a priority for any officers in the school that are interviewing kids at our schools. Is that something that, you know, is a priority or maybe it was just the year before or something?
Um, no, what happened before I was a captain, I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I haven't been a captain super long. So I, I doubt that that has been, right, much of it has been. But I would like to see it too.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a variety of trainings. I know restorative justice is, you know, a priority of the school. That was a priority of mine in college. I was part of the Scotty Resort Justice Initiative. I, I believe in it. And I believe it's valuable and everything, having all the team members kind of on the same page with an initiative like that. It's important. So we don't have conflicting, you know, differences at times. And I think the same thing with juvenile interviews. The toughest thing is finding a class for it. I don't mind sending the SROs off to train. It's great if we can find summer training because it's an interview of the presence of the school. So if there's training that you can suggest.
O J P does it for free. You just got to get on the, or DOJ, sorry. You just got to get on the waitlist.
Huh?
You have contact information for that.
Yep. Do you want to send it to me and I'll?
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. Yeah. Because I don't care how long it is, if it's two week training, it's an opportunity.
Laura, can I ask you a question? Are you, are you asking that the SROs conduct interviews following the forensic interview guidelines or just have training on interviewing juveniles? Just like you asked.
Well, I've read many reports that the officers take at the schools. And so even if it's not a formal forensic interview, it still does the coverage of the first response interview, which is gathering, you know, the details and referring it for a forensic interview. Because suggestibility also impacts that first initial response, as you know, from your investigations as well, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I think a good foundation for that stuff's important. We also don't want to compromise a court case later because we made a bigger案子.
Um, the other thing is, I, we, we talked about this last year, staffed interviews versus, or uniforms versus uniforms. Is there, you know, I, I just, again, work with a lot of kids that are traumatized. It's really important. They have positive interactions with law enforcement, but also in the school setting, it's really important that they can focus on school. And sometimes coming in in full uniform definitely can, can have an adversarial effect as well. So is there, is that something that, I, I guess I don't know, but I have seen mostly uniforms when I've interacted, but.
Yeah, so our challenge is, we have a couple of things. First and foremost, the officers are going to be readily identifiable as police officers.
Yep.
So I wore this, I wore this for two reasons today. One, I walk in here as readily identifiable as a police officer. Yeah, there is no doubt in my identity as a police officer. This place can be on fire and you wouldn't have no doubt as a police officer. In a critical incident, I can't have somebody who would have an ambiguous uniform, a bystander of guarantee you that guns aren't supposed to be in schools. But I think it'd be naive to think that somebody hasn't brought a gun into the school, a parent, and have their kid, et cetera. So if something catastrophic happened, our police officers have to be immediately identifiable as police officers. They need to also have all of their equipment where they usually carry it. I carry my taser here. Alex carried my taser here. I, that's the second reason I wore this uniform today because I'm going out in public. I don't know what's going to happen in five minutes. I might get called to an active shooter event. I'm a captain, I'm still going to go. I need to have access to the stuff that I'm getting. Third reason, the reason we got the external best carriers in the first place is because there's some significant benefits to the officer's long-term health, particularly their lower back. There have been tons of studies out there that show that wearing thirty pounds of equipment on your belt for twenty-five years has to have a negative impact on your lower back. Believe it or not. So moving that way up to the best, you can see that across the country, pretty much every department of the country is going to that. Um, I do, I do respect what you're saying though about, like, there are students out there that have had traumatic experiences where police officers were there, were involved. We may have had to arrest a parent. I get that. That certainly creates a negative, and create a negative. I also recognize that there is a community that have a bias towards police and they make assumptions about what I do. Um, I think we need to focus on combating that. I can't ask my officers to introduce their external best carriers. I can't ask them to sacrifice their lower back. I don't think that's fair. I wouldn't be a good supervisor or leader if I asked them to do that. Wouldn't be a good supervisor or leader if I asked them to leave some of their equipment behind that might save their life or allow them to save the life of a student. I'd be a bad leader and supervisor if I did that. That's my response. I, I get it.
There are some schools though that do that, so I'm just curious of what their workaround is, but I hear you. Thank you.
Well, I'll just give you an example. This, this is why I wore it work today. I end up in a school, a school fair situation, and you guys are coming, you know, I'm not identifiable, just like you said, but this is my day to day.
Unfortunately, I've known this guy since COVID. So I, I would recognize him fine. There's a Duluth officer who happens to live here in Superior. He's dropping his kid off and he has a sidearm. And he's carrying a gun where he legally can. And I go to the school on an active shooter event, I'm not giving him a warning. I'm not saying, hey, police officer dropped the weapon. I'm not going to give a potential school shooter the opportunity to kill another person. I'm going to shoot him on sight. That's the problem. If I can't readily identify that person as a police officer, they have a gun in a school during a school shooting, I'm going to shoot them and I'm not going to give them a warning. That's the harsh reality.
Um, you've answered almost every question I've had and have had parents email, I'm sure all of us, um, especially with the tragic events that have happened recently. But are things that you're talking about carrying a rifle in the school, is that something that we're seeing is happening in many other schools across the United States? This is very common to happen now. How many resource officers do we have? And I'm sorry if you all know this already, two. Where are they primarily or do they rotate or what?
You know, high school and.
So one is at the middle school. He stays there. The other one stayed at the high school, yeah.
We used to have one that rotated at elementary school.
That was part of what I was saying earlier. We hired a social worker. And I would say at the elementary level, they primarily are called to support adult issues. That's a safe to think?
Yeah, and there is neighborhood control and we have had a student or two who recommended some support and they did. Really good. And usually I get one of maybe three or four officers that kind of know me and those a little bit. So it.
I know that we had.
Encourage them to come through. Like that's something we, I know in COVID we couldn't, but like urging most folks in the neighborhood to come start putting through the school a little bit more often. Even just build relationships with the kids.
Even if, even if I'm dropping out my, my daughter at school, you can sometimes see them, they'll just, they'll just stay in the parking lot for the mornings and be visible and.
I'd like to point out those officers that are just in school in uniform. Yeah, correct.
Yes. Yep, yep. Yeah, it's very intentional.
And we've gotten full gamut. They've been in uniform, Paul, like you said. They were allowed to come in regular dress clothes as well, but you could always identify Officer Johnson, Officer Kendall, or Officer McKinnon. Because they, their guns were still visible and stuff and plus they were so active with the, the student body and everything. They were so visible that, you know, the people know them. And I, I hear what you're saying. I hear what Laura's asking. You know, what is that happy meeting? I don't know for sure, but.
I think one of the things we talked about is making sure our officers feel safe. I think that was, that, that's a priority, I think.
I, I think what it boils down to though is when you look at Paul's vest and his gear, whether he's got tourniquet, his radio, his camera, taser, all, all different stuff. You never know what he's going to get into. So if you ask him not to, not to wear that, that's half his gear that he doesn't have or has to go retrieve. And I, I think the point, the officer never knows what's going to happen. And so it's not necessarily about the correct uniform, but the officer having the gear they need to do the job that they're paid to do, I think is important. That's good. Piggyback special off yours. What's our current fiduciary arrangement with the department in terms of salaries, benefits, those types of things? I know what Duluth was, but I, I can't pinpoint what ours is.
I think we pay the salaries, but we don't cover it, like they work additional in the summer. So we don't cover that cost.
It's like two thirds.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're paying two thirds of, of the cost.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And then do we still pay overtime, for instance, that he pays down? He's got called in for
a line in, on ten each building for that, I believe.
Can we please look into, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna, I found it in the MOU here. So the city pays the school resource officers in a way consistent with the labor contract. The district reimburses sixty-two percent of the officer's salary, Wisconsin retirement fund contribution, social security costs, et cetera, the standard stuff. Wisconsin tariff contribution, social security costs, et cetera, the standard stuff. Any overtime compensation shall be approved by the district, the city or agents prior to any accumulation. And funding for training, uh, says professional development activities undertaken by the school resource officer is mutually approved and is expensive to be shared.
So I, I don't know much about our local staffing, but I know nationally there's been some challenges for departments being staffed. If we were to explore expanding our partnership with you and having more officers available, is that something that this PD and as an organization can, could look at, or would that be dependent on our hands or designers for increased access?
I'll be honest, if I was with these, I can't do, we're adding overtime for the officers.
Yeah.
Adding an officer to the school is something that we could prioritize, but it's not something that we could likely do next school year.
Good.
Yeah, because that's what I was going to ask. I know parents had even addressed the same. You know, could we get more resource officers? Because as we see in Texas, it was an elementary school that had it happen to them. And so if we have no resource officer, we might have a rifle, but who is, and how long can you guys respond? I know a lot of the schools are pretty close proximity, but I think of Lake Superior and I think of Four Corners. And that would be detrimental, you know, for that time. So, I mean, it's hard because we don't want to. I, I guess we need to be prepared for the worst, but not, I don't, it's tough.
It's an opportunity.
Right, right.
And yeah, I mean, those are county jurisdictions. I mean, is there a relationship with the sheriff's department? Four Corners?
Four Corners is the only county jurisdiction, county would get the call. Mind you, that could be ten, twenty, thirty minute response depending on where they're at. It does fall under the city, uh, superior school district as far as the district wise being superior, which is, the SRO has always fallen from SPD here. Um, and typically in the past, the county had deputized the SRO to go out there and take care of, um, some things. But I think the attention is pretty minimal, not on their fault or anything. It's, it's well out into the county. So a response out there is pretty low to minimal.
And right now, just on the street, we are stretched to minimum. So we, we maintain minimum staffing. To give you an idea of what that looks like, during the busiest part of our day, we have six officers and a sergeant. Then we have detectives and administrators and an active shooter that we're all going to go. But there's six officers on the road and there's people complaining about car break-ins on the Wisconsin. Saying about car break-ins in the city. And about fireworks, people complaining about aliens, complaining about therapeutics. All of those things are handled typically by six people. So I stretch pretty badly.
I just like to point out the Brooks comment. It just look at the numbers, you know. This last year, twelve, one thousand two hundred and sixty-six high schoolers get an SRO. Nine hundred and seventy-six middle schoolers have an SRO. Yeah, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two elementary students with zero SROs. A lot of kids without, you know, that, uh, SRO. What do we want to say? Protecting them, guiding them, educating them, creating a bond with them. Whatever it is, it's eighteen hundred kids we're leaving out of the loop there.
When did we cut back on the resource officers in elementary schools?
So last year, reduced given the primary role and, and we had one who circulated. So it wasn't like there was one in a building. What's that?
There never was just one at each.
Right. And so he rotated, um, and so, you know, you'd have to, if Ryan needed him, he'd have to kind of track him down. And he might be, you know, dealing with something else. So it wasn't like every building had an SRO.
There were situations where if you didn't, he didn't worry, he would have to go to the street person too, because he would be, he could be tied up somewhere else with this, with an issue.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Our principals and our secretaries use nine-one-one and that's what we're directed to do. And so that has been a good response and.
I do want to say that I think the addition of a social worker, so the streets, he's a fantastic. We've added a, it's not a social worker target. Once we classify it as a social worker, there's. Fireman's the thing now. But our coordinated response specialist is very significant. It's been a forceful employer. So I, I'll take it as the police department criticizing having a social worker added to the staff. I think that's a fantastic idea. I like to see an officer in every school. Yeah. I don't think I could hire that many police officers anytime soon, but.
Well, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
We'll be in touch, um, regarding next steps.
Uh, costs, or are these going to be additional rifles purchased then, since they're, okay, thank you.
We actually have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I better get my thumb here. Oh, there's another one. I love it.
Did you bring, did you bring a car?
Luckily I have my keys now.
Have a great night.
Let, before moving on on that, so are we able to put some on the agenda, talk about what his requests and needs are? And maybe talk about bringing back an SRO, having those discussions?
I think that's what you were going to follow up with.
Well, I was going to follow up on the safes and the equipment. I just heard him say that it would be challenging to hire an SRO at the elementary level. And we would need to make a budget adjustment to that as well, which is not planned.
Is, is some, some we can communicate to and talk about for the future?
I don't know what I was hoping was, is my question was.
I guess I, you know, it's been a year, but go back and look at why we did it. Because if I recall, I mean, we looked at the incidents at the elementary school were so minimal, number one.
They're primarily focused on transparency. Right.
The other was, I think the police department explained to us that response time would be so quick.
Right. They are neighborhood, so they are in our, like, like I gave the example, when you, they, they will park in our school parking lots if they have the ability to, just visibility and, and readily.
Yeah, that was all part of what we did.
Do you want to do anything, touch on, on that, just to throw this out there? We always talk about the response to crimes or incidents when we talk about SROs. And I think like Paul was saying, is trying to build a rapport with this, with the students as well. And speaking from experience, I'm just going to give an example here. Four, Four Corners didn't, Four Corners had an SRO at the time, but again, it was Officer Kendall and he rotated through all elementary schools. So at, at those times, I used to go stop in Four Corners all the time because it's just a hard school to get to, um, for them. And I didn't go there to write tickets, deal with crime, anything like that. I went there and had lunch with kids. They used, I think it was PBIS stuff. They had Falcon tickets out there. Um, we got to the point where they would use their Falcon tickets to purchase lunch with a cop, whoever, whoever would be, not just me, you know. In one given year, we had hundred and thirty lunches with students. So, you know, a couple of times we do full class demonstrations just because the, the want was, was so high. And it was building those relationships, having that rapport so that those kids, if they did see an officer in the world, whenever it's going on at home, whatever's going on in their free time, that it was positive inter, interaction. And it, it made a difference. And I can say, following those, those kids to the middle school, when there was real incidents, those were kids that would come and, and talk to me because they knew who I was, they knew how we interacted. So I, I'd just like to say, I'd like to try to get, when we're elementary, there is a true benefit regardless of a low number of incident calls. Um, there is a benefit. I know Officer Kendall does the same thing, going and having lunch with students over, just doing some extra things, doing some presentations, whatnot, that had a huge impact. And I guess a hundred and thirty kids in one year using their tickets. You know, when they could have bought any toy or, or candy or whatever, I, I think speaks volumes just to that standard. So that's a reason why I'd like to, you know, revisit that thought to bring them back in SRO.
But I think, I mean, I, I think I heard Paul and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, right? I think that's what our, our neighborhood, um, patrols tried to do as well, right? They tried to come in and do those connections.
I'd say pre-COVID that was happening.
Yeah, that was.
Clearly, I, this, I'd like to see.
I think we need to be more intentional on that.
Right.
Sure.
I'd like to see that happen again.
Yeah.
That might be part of the issue of not having enough staff.
Right. They might be, they might be.
Sure.
Yeah.
Say cut.
Yep. And talking staff, I mean, this next year is going to be hard. I know the county suffers too with staffing. So, but if we can plan ahead and look ahead and see the cost and what it would take to get that level on. But imagine sometime the levels will go back up.
Having the invite there, we have preached at least for a very long time that I've been here, that relationships, you build relationships across all disciplines, no matter what it is. And, and having that strong relationship, whether it be with the police department, the sheriff's department, or with the teacher in the classroom or whomever, that, that's the strength of our districts, should be the strength of our community. So it, it's good to look at it and revisit it and see where we can move next, if we can.
I think that's the point is the if, because all I hear, you know, working with law enforcement is like how overwhelmed, how there's not enough applicants, how we have vacancies, you know, DPD and Superior Police Department have vacancies, like they could hire more people. There's just not enough applicants right now. So I like the idea of the invite, but also like being realistic about, you know, what they can do and.
Focus on that one, the, the first item, the, the long gun. The second would be to have a discussion, maybe at the police department with the, the chief and get his thoughts on that.
Yeah.
So I'll. Do we have interest, but.
I'll add the, some, an agenda item for July.
They talked about his tactical supplies too.
Yep, yep. I'm going to take a look at whatever that agenda item looked like in two thousand and sixteen, see if I need to, how I can revise that for this.
And can we find out the actual cost of sixty-two percent also of their, just to see what it costs?
Yeah, obviously that changes every year based on their contract.
Exactly. But we, in the ballpark then.
It's in the expansion report, isn't it?
Tell you that in twenty twenty-one, we've spent a hundred and eighty-four thousand, six forty-six. Twenty nineteen, twenty, it was a hundred and fifty-three thousand. This year.
And twenty twenty was low because of COVID.
Yep. And this year we've spent, twenty-one, we, we would have been standing, I guess, we would have got about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. So then I would entertain a motion to accept a policy and rules committee's report is presented.
So moved.
Oh, one. Motion and second. Any discussion there? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the personnel negotiations, two, three, four, five, six, items. Tell Lynn good luck.
I will. Thank you.
The committee recommends approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero-two for inclusion under the state of Wisconsin Diver Compensation Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the committee recommends approval of the June twenty twenty-two hires, transfers and separations report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the committee recommends approval of the updated job description and the new salary schedule for the buildings and ground supervisor. This position will be in the professional category of the employee handbook.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the committee recommends approval of the updated salary schedule for the maintenance worker position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The committee recommends approval of the updated job description for the following positions in the professional category. And that is the executive assistant and the executive assistant for the Department of Teaching and Learning.
Move to approve.
Are those separate ones or?
They're two, they're, they're two separate positions, one.
One vote.
One.
One vote, okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just so I'm clear, do those add any financial or is it just the description?
Um, they're replacing two positions. Is that what your question is?
They're just replacing, so it's a description thing? It's not a pay change or pay rate or anything?
Um, the first one is change, is going from an executive assistant to an executive assistant. So that, any pay change would be dependent on who's hired, based on experience, right?
That's Kelly's spot, right?
That's Kelly's spot.
Kelly's spot.
The other one is the executive assistant for the Department of Teaching and Learning. That would be, um, a slight added cost because it'd be going clerical support to an executive assistant support. So that would probably be an increase, do you know approximately what it is?
Part of the reasoning for that was in case the executive assistant has to be gone at some period of time, we have someone to fill in.
Yeah, we, we need more than one person who's able to.
We need more than one and we have zero right now.
Correct. Oh, Casey.
We don't know the number for that. Any rough idea? No?
Yeah, I don't know. That might, I'll include it in.
It would also depend on experience.
Yeah, it's going to depend on that. I mean, we can get a range. Yeah.
Did the clerical position and now new executive assistant position, did they have the same job responsibilities? Or was it, was something added like into one of the departments?
Several things were added and changed. The clerical position's getting eliminated.
Right.
Yep. Several things, one example being, having people do job and supports similar work that Kelly's position.
Right.
Yeah. So we'll be cutting a position and as part of a way to fund this position.
Well, no, it's replacing a.
Replacing it.
But that's an increased cost, a slight increase in cost. Yeah.
And that's what you're asking, what's the difference between those two?
Yep.
Right?
So like over the last year or so, we've tried to restructure different positions within this building. We used to employ like, for example, two people who used to do payroll. Now we have one person that's part of her job. So just over the course of the year, we adjust those different positions based on what, what we need now.
And I do believe that this, the, the first position actually was reduced in pay not too long ago, correct? The pay was higher when we initially started.
For the executive. The benefits, I think, were adjusted to pay. So there is a reduction in.
Category. So we reduced that in that area too.
So originally that position used to be in the administrative category, but we didn't feel that was appropriately placed. And so that's part now of the professional category. So it does require some experience certification or license for educational requirements. But it's not an administrative position, which changed the benefit package. That answer the question?
Yeah. I, I guess personally it's probably my fault for not getting into this all week here is figuring out the price. I guess I just kind of like to know the money side before I said yes or no to it. And I guess everybody can have, is, I could have asked it last week, I suppose, if I'd thought about it.
I can pull it up on the.
I think she's almost got it.
And we're talking in generalities, right? Because I heard you say that we need to look at experience, all that stuff.
Yeah, there'd be a range.
We're just thinking about, yeah, yeah.
Fair.
Yeah.
And again, it's going to, I mean, it would have to go, I'd have to tell you for every step, but we'll just go with the step, okay? On step ten, the difference, or the highest step, the difference. If they came with ten years. If they came with ten years of experience, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars more.
Well.
Maybe a bit, right?
Yeah. I, I don't think we're going to get into it in ten years.
I don't think so either.
No, I'll tell the, um, step one.
Oh, no, say one.
I think, let's look at step one.
Yeah, step one is probably going to be realistic. They're not, they're not banging the door down, are they yet?
No.
I don't think so. Which seems to be the.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yep.
About a sixteen thousand dollars, I guess, on step one.
Good.
Yes.
Quite the jump.
Is that year round?
I don't know, we, I think we looked at the responsibilities though, and if we compare that to clerical, the responsibilities are substantially different. I, I mean, you know, you like comparisons, and if we compare those two things, I think we're gonna see a big, big difference. I, I don't know if you've looked at it or not, maybe we could pull up.
Are you talking about the job description?
Yeah.
I think one of the biggest differences.
Executive assistant.
I think one of the biggest needs and one of the biggest differences with the executive assistant is the ability to generate communication independently and be able to complete some tasks without direction.
We also are requiring your minimum requirement of simple secondary education, which is not required for.
Clear.
Yep.
Ask, what, what fund would that come out of?
General.
General fund, and can we afford it?
Yeah, you know, we're close, we're early enough in the budget process, but these tweaks that we can make, you know, I guess. I'll make it easier, but, but, you know, the amount of money, the difference is enough that we can absorb it and hope for some areas.
Yeah.
Is that, does that might come out of the same fund that we, the teachers and everybody else from today?
As, I mean, overall, yes, but there are some teachers that have a special education, or some teachers that have, um, but. So, it's kind of.
It's the main, it's the main fund, though, that funds most school operations, including staff benefits.
That's safe to say, right?
How much is our general funds?
The whole fund? Yeah, the, the general fund is the majority.
Right, but how much, like eighty percent?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the fund that funds most of our operations across the district.
All right, is there any other questions? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. In the last action item, the committee recommends approval of the updated job description for the following positions in the teacher category, and that is the techni- technology education teacher.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There was one discussion item. The committee of the whole meeting, the board discussed planning meet and confer sessions with SFT for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. District Administrator Starzacki, Starzacki was directed to provide some examples of structures from other districts and to obtain a legal opinion from the district attorney to advise on avoiding any potential legal issues. Uh, we had no informational items. So, entertain a motion to accept the personnel negotiations committee's report is presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion there? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Coming down to the teaching and learning committee, there were no action items, no discussion items. We had four informational items. Uh, committee of the whole meeting, Carrie Saunders, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, shared an update and overview of work accomplished in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And, uh, Crystal Hinsman, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, she shared her school and summer professional development. And that was followed by Kate Tesh, our Director of Continuous Improvement. And she, uh, and Continuous Improvement and Assessment, shared the AGR spring update for the board. And last, Tara Ganyer, our Director of Student Services, she shared an update on the selection and implementation of a new reading resource for the special education students. On that, I would entertain a motion to accept the teaching and learning committee's report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Back to you guys now on the next one.
Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't even notice that.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, Budget and Insurance Committee. Um, there are three action items, and again, one of those is new tonight. First, and that is the new one, administration recommends approval to move the district health insurance to WCA Group Health Trust effective July first of twenty-twenty-two due to the current health insurance carrier, WEA, going out of business.
Move to approve.
Motion, we have a motion, is there a second?
Again.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, I'm just gonna turn it over to Shannon, because I already talked to her prior to the meeting, so.
So, uh, for the email that you guys received last week, the district was notified that WEA is going to cease operations as of twelve thirty-one, twenty-two. Um, we could have stayed with them through twelve thirty-one, but we had concerns and we're here to support home services, the other people to offer us in these next six months. We know that they've already terminated a hundred and ten employees. So, I was worried that, you know, we would get into September, October, we could not be able to have the same level of service that we have right now. With that said, then we reached out to our current broker, took out some different options, and he went back to the companies that bid us back in March, and Group Health Trust said that they would honor the bid that they gave us, which is about three percent less than what WEA had given us, and that they would, um, move us with very minimal disruption as of seven one, meaning that employees don't have to throw out any paperwork, because we just gotta throw up enrollment, go do everything throughout lifetime transfer. There's no need to, uh, just come back and rethrow paperwork with one of the most daunting tasks for transition to a new period. With that said, we're just looking for approval to move forward with them effective seven one.
Is the health insurance having to go January, January, or is it the school year?
It's, uh, our, it's a, it's July first to June thirtieth, because our fiscal year is July first.
Does that refer to anything changing mid, as far as people on deductibles with WEA and that?
Not at all, anyway, because the new deductible is.
So, nothing affects them there?
Good question. Thanks.
And you got everything they said in, in writing?
Correct.
And I think we should just point out, too, that we, they did give us a lower bid initially, but the insurance committee felt like that.
Did you say that? I, I said three percent, but I, I didn't say why we told.
Yeah, so, um, we just, they just felt like the, they didn't want the disruption in coverage that, that was a minimal savings, and so.
WEA trust made the decision for them.
They, they made it for, yeah, yeah, they made it for us, so.
And there is a second year rate cap, they were the only company that came back with the second year rate cap at nine percent. So that means that they won't hold.
WCA to WCA.
No one, yeah.
Yeah, that's huge, because we've seen some numbers come in significantly higher than that with second year terms. At thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent sometimes. Well, yeah. Uh, you guys did this all prior to broken, I've been here, and all. They're all like the in-house medical care, all the same, all of, you know, doctor and all that.
All the disruption analysis, and the disruption analysis did show that ninety-nine point like five percent of the coverage was the same, so there's a very, a very small percentage where there might be some issues, but they reach out to those people directly to figure out what the word. Whether it's a pharmaceutical issue, a, a carrier issue, you know, something like that. We don't, I know what those are, we just know that they reach out directly.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the committee recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in May of twenty-twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Thank you very much.
There's no other discussion, then all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Uh, the last action item, the committee recommends approval of request for new school activity account for the Spartan Manufacturing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, there were no discussion items, the informational item is the Fund Ten Revenue and Expenditure Report.
We didn't hit you.
Yep, we didn't go through it last week.
Oh, I don't know why, FSA. This would be revenue taken in through May. Um, please, just going to go out of, you can see we have about twenty-one million left, twenty-point-six million left to take in. Don't be worried, those are a lot of just journal entries that need to be done. Uh, we don't journal entry the remaining of the tax until about the end of June, that's when we'll put those in, and then we receive our final state aid information from DPI on June seventeenth, so a lot of those journal entries will come. I think it will be very close on the revenue for this year. Over to expenses. Again, nothing out of the ordinary through May, we are sitting at about nine billion that's left to expend, nine point eight million. This was before we had run our withheld payroll tables, so complex process, but we pay the teacher salaries for July and August, and get it pushed back into this fiscal year. So after, I believe we ran our payables about a week and a half ago, so this, you know, looked different now for June, but that's gonna eat up a lot of that nine point eight million, because we would have run four payrolls for certified staff, that would come out of that.
Okay. Has anybody have any questions for Shannon?
Are you planning in July to give a preliminary, okay, we wanted to mention that?
Yep, we'll do a preliminary budget in July, uh, very preliminary, and then we'll also do a wrap-up, because we should have pretty much the final numbers, uh, because we do about late evening, last letter gives us a little bit more time to provide those numbers, and also because then our audit is the week and a half later, so our audit, I believe, starts the week of. July, July, I think.
So the board officially will approve our budget at the beginning of November, but Shannon will share with you the development or what that, what the initial plan would look like next month.
Are we continuing to work with the same company that did our last audit?
It's limited in the amount of companies that can provide audits.
That was my understanding, too.
First, we'll go into RFP.
Yep.
But, I think with every, you know, we're, we're kinda giving them the benefit of the doubt, because they're going through the same challenges, staff, and who we are, and so. And we'll go through this year, see what happens, and possibly, uh, maybe do RFP in February, for March, if we're not set aside again.
Excellent, thanks for your update on that.
Is there any other discussion on that? Entertain a motion to accept the Budget and Insurance Committee report is presented.
Move to approve.
Second, motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, the Operations Committee had one action item. The committee recommends approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero-one, Compliance Maintenance Resolution, which is the Four Corners Waste Water Freedom.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? And this is just something that we do every year. Hearing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There are no discussion items, under informational items, the first one is the typo, that was from the previous month, and, um, at last week's committee of the whole, Director of Food Services, Jamie Wilson, he shared an update on the summer food service program. That and entertain a motion to accept the Operations Committee report is presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. All right, the last committee report is legislative, there were no action items, no discussion items. Couple of informational items, federal guidance on using COVID relief funds to prevent and respond to crime and promote public safety. The US Department of Education previously published this guidance about how S R three funds may be used to prevent and respond to crime and promote public safety. According to the guidance, school districts can use their federal COVID relief resources on several strategies to reduce violence and enhance public safety. These strategies aim to help students, families, and communities to recover from the pandemic. Uh, the next is WASB resolutions. Uh, the WASB resolutions book is now updated and posted online. Resolutions adopted by the annual WASB Delegate Assembly set the policy direction for the WASB and its lobbying efforts. Board resolutions for consideration for the twenty-twenty-three Delegate Assembly must be submitted to the WASB by September fifteenth. With that, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Legislative Committee's report is presented.
Move to approve.
Second, motion and a second, any discussion?
Okay, just add, I.
Yes.
I pulled up, or Kelly gave me the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen legislative priorities that you guys had uh, for that, uh, WASB resolutions.
Yep.
So I, just an example that she had was increased special education funding was a topic, voucher, taxpayer transparency was a topic, and Medicaid reimbursement for mental health services was another topic that you guys brought forth back in those times.
Yep.
I'll just kinda give that example for anybody that's thinking I had ever, September here.
Medicaid reimbursement is still an issue. Sure.
And special education, yeah.
And special education is too.
Millions.
I guess they're all still an issue.
Uh, anything else? Get them, I did get to. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, what cares, I couldn't remember if I did the first one, second one, I don't know. All right, that concludes the reports, are there any other reports by members of the board?
Not, I just, I just wanted to bring up one thing. Um, you know, the last, last regular meeting, I brought up our visits to schools. Since then, we finished with the second half of our school, of the schools, and I just wanted to bring up that. I thought it was a great opportunity, again, for us. Uh, Steve Olson here accompanied us, um, to those, those schools as well. Yeah, I just wanna bring up some of the big takeaways. Um, number one, I think we were overwhelmingly welcome at each school. Um, excited, everybody was excited to have us there, didn't have any negative feedback visiting the schools. It's a good time to talk with the principals, administrators, and hear what's going on. Um, but one of the big, one of the common things I kept, I, I, I saw in some of the schools was, we talk about mental health for students, it's, we, we need also think about mental health for staff. Um, you know, they do have personal time and sick time and whatnot, but, so again, we're talking about shortages in staff and, and lack of subs and everything, it's, it's hard for a lot of those good teachers to actually take a personal day when they know they can't have a sub fill that spot. And so, like, just trying to focus a little bit on what we can do, maybe in the future, what schools can do for, you know, just the mental health, health of their own, um, their own staff in general. Um, I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong or bad, and I'm just bringing, bringing that to light that we, I, we need to watch that too and focus on that as well, as well as the students. Um, again, getting schooled, but morale is high at, at some schools, and, and the reason I say that is some schools highlighted a great, uh, a great bond between the PTAs and their schools. Um, some more than others. And the schools that have high morale amongst their staff seem to have a high turnout with PTA, um, and parents showing up to those. And Brooke or Stevie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that kinda seemed to be a correlation there with, with the morale and the PTA. Um, Four Corners, we talked about liaison, we already talked about liaisons, uh, already tonight, so I won't touch on that anymore. Um, but just the need to have some kind of presence out there, same thing with Lake Superior, they're kinda like on the fringe or outside of the fringe per se. Um, yeah. Anyhow, time was limited, someplace, we, we had a lot to run into, and we had a great lunch, um, at the high school with, uh, Jamie Wilson, kinda showed us the food services and talked to us about that. And I think, I think that was a great highlight or a great way to end our, our visits. But again, I, we'll keep prefacing that, I think it's important for us to visit these schools once in a while. Um, again, if Pinky wants to go, open invitation, let's do it, let's, let's make. I didn't work last time, because I, I publicly said I'd like to go, and then.
I think what we'll do is, let's get school underway, and maybe fall, maybe I'll set up.
I meant like specifically what was the process for this?
Yeah, that's what I mean, I was.
And then some.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Could like select board members go to the schools, or only?
Well, if you can, all go at the same time, so, um.
Three can.
Yep, so.
What was the decision process for the three that went?
I asked to be included, I knew they'd let me know that they.
Did you do it publicly, or did you do it privately? So, I did it publicly. After, after that board meeting, when I, when I, when I gave the offer, um, actually, Steve Stupak here wanted to go as well, and when I gave the open offer, just let me know, um, they let, they let me know, I said, let's, let's do it, and. So you're making the decision on, that's what it sounds like, I'm just checking. I didn't make a, I didn't make any decision, I think it's, it's a, a thing we can all do on our own. I, I think, Mike, if you wanted to visit. Absolutely. I think if you wanted to visit schools, I think you can, you can ask too, um. I guess, yeah, that's why I'm asking the process, because I work in a school, so I gotta.
So here's what I'm proposing, I'm proposing, I think it's a good idea for you guys to see the daily operations. What I'm proposing is. what we put, we push out like a calendar, so you would sign up, so there'd be limited how many people could go at one time, obviously. Um, but then you'd sign up as to when you're available, and I think it's always good to come back and report out when you when we do these things in an organized way, so we I I would suggest we get school underway before we do it again.
Yeah, that's all I want to do, is try to go rogue, you know, I can go by myself and I'd love to.
I think.
But going rogue is not really.
Prefer if.
The guidance is different from OSB on how this goes, so.
Right, I would prefer in an organized way, like I, so that principals and staff can anticipate and know what's kind of happening.
Because it does have an impact, and I hope we're considering that, because working in a school myself, when board members are there, it's different.
And I.
Taking into consideration the impact it might have on staff, too.
And I do site visits, I know Crystal does site visits, she's doing walkthroughs in the classrooms, I do walkthroughs with principals, so we wouldn't want to like do, we want to coordinate those efforts, right, so we're not all.
That's kind of what I'm getting at, because you know, I want to go to the schools and I can go to the schools, but I think that just me showing up, so that's why I'm kind of trying to identify what process have you used, you kind of mentioned that people are coming to you to ask.
So I think what I heard is Kelly organized it for our new board members.
Perfect.
I think Steve, you possibly reached out and said, can I join you? Is that what happened?
Yes.
Yeah.
So doing in session publicly isn't, it should be privately.
Well, no, we're gonna organize it more thoughtfully in the fall, is what I recommend.
So it's just good for me to know the policies and how we're gonna go about it, so that we all have an opportunity. We really talk about involvement and inclusion and all those things, I want to be a part of that inclusion and that involvement.
Yeah, I think I vaguely remember when you brought that up that you were.
Well, and I and I got a response from both Brooke and you both about how much you'd like to have me there, so I just never got the invite.
So I I bring this up, because I think it's important that we highlight what we saw and and what took part. Uh, the process we went through, just like Amy says, that uh we had a a sign up, the school principals all all new and had chances to sign up. Um, I'm not unilaterally making decisions, but I think that anybody anybody up here can ask the questions and and show show the interest and of of respect of what a official meeting is, like, we can't bring more than three, that's that's just the way it works, so that's how that's how it boils down to, and again.
No.
Oh, oh, Mike.
No.
This isn't, this doesn't. Let me let me finish, please.
Okay, so we.
Okay, can I? Can I? Can I finish? Can I finish?
When are you gonna get done?
Easy. If you've got somewhere to go, you can go, but I'll finish.
Something to say and you still.
Okay. So now I now I lost my train of thought, but I I think it's I mean, is is this, this isn't a bad thing, this is a this is a good thing. In no way do we go to schools to dictate what's going on or or do anything, it's it's just a nice way for us to show that we are interested. We want to see what's going on and have a nice conversation. I don't know why we're trying to make this such a negative thing or a bad thing or argue about it. Again, I, as I've said many times before, I extend the op, the invitations. If anybody wants to take me up and we can organize it, just like we did before, I would I would love to do it. And we can look at that as a future for the next school year, but again, I think it's important that we uh do what we can to to keep our interest and and see what's going on in schools.
I'll let you. So to clarify, you just said I opened the extension to coordinate it, so you're gonna coordinate it, or I'm confused.
That is not what I said, I said I give an open invitation, if you want to go to schools, let's talk, and then let's coordinate it with Amy. Yeah, and Amy who runs the schools, or you don't have to go with me, you can go on your own, you go with anybody you want, I'm just giving an invitation, Mike.
I understood Amy to say she's gonna set up a calendar.
Excellent.
To where board members can sign up. Okay, the board member sign up, when one gets full, that that'd be then, oh, find another date that fits for you.
And I would guess that if we had an interest to going in, we could approach Amy and it can be worked out. Yep.
You know, I just want to say something, uh, last meeting, this meeting, the meeting where we had our mask, we are supposed to work as a group. We're not supposed to be bickering in front of our public. That's all I got to say. I'm really disappointed in it.
Been here for twenty four years, Steve, there's been bickering.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we're supposed to work in a group, as a group, let's work as a group.
And I just keep on saying to my kids, you know, and trying to model, I mean, we are teaching restorative practice to our students about respect, kindness, inclusion, and then we as a board need to model that as well.
Thank you.
Um, so what are we teaching our kids? You know, we can, we can have, we can agree to disagree, but I think respecting kindness goes a long way.
So what I see is asking clarifying questions happens a lot. It happened a lot in the previous meeting, it happened a lot in other meetings. Certain members on our board asked a lot of clarifying questions. Now, I'm asking clarifying questions about procedures and policies for who can access the schools, how do we as a board want to go about it? And I'm picking up on some extreme defensiveness about it. I understand that open invitation has been offered. I raised my hand and said I would like to be invited. Okay, so that's you, and I said that's you, and that didn't happen, so I'm just putting that out there so that I'm not putting anything on either one of you, because you're the two that offered the invitations, that we have a process, and I'm glad we're gonna have it. It works out great, because then it looks like an inclusive process.
If I remember.
And how that I don't understand how my clarifying questions are causing such unrest.
And Mike, I think that you brought up the um thought that you would like to join after we had already visited, if I remember correctly. And it's right, so.
And then Steve went for another round of visits, correct?
I think it was after the first rounds, yeah.
After reverse.
After the first round, Steve went on another round of visits, so.
And I honestly knew that Steve was coming that day, so.
Perfect.
Again, it wasn't.
Other that there's a.
Mike, it wasn't to try to leave anyone out or disclude, it was purely that he had asked Ed.
Sure.
I didn't know, uh, you know, you can only have three, so Mike.
That's fine, that's.
I really, I think that you're, you might be reading into things or feelings might be a little bit more hurt over it, and it wasn't intentionally done. Um, and we are excited as a group to, I think, get into the schools. I think we need to focus on that good and that positiveness and and less on like the divisiveness of, well, I didn't get invited or he got invited or we need to come together and work as a team.
Unintentionally overlooked.
Right.
Now we have a process.
Right.
So by asking my clarifying questions, now I know what the process is, because did anybody know what the process was before I asked that?
Well, can I clarify something? So um, we had a process in place for new board member orientation. Steve Olson took it upon himself to ask to join them. That was, you didn't do that through Kelly, you didn't do that through me.
No, I did not.
So in the future, we should work through the process, I think, is what I'm hearing today.
Yeah, I'll take the blame for that, because I I gave the invitations.
Okay, I'm just listening, I'm observing, I'm trying to.
So then factually, I would contest what you're saying, it's about feelings or taking it out of context, the process was that he was asked personally.
No, he asked personally, and.
And then the team was selected, so there was an opportunity for other board members to do that, even though I said I would like to go, okay, that's all I wanted to clear.
And I, from my understanding, Steve had asked Ed as well, and because we were gonna have four, you had.
I was the one that stood up, that stepped in and says, we can only have three people, so I'll step up.
Right.
That is what I said.
That is correct, and I also told you that evening, Steve, if you really wanted to go, that I also would step up if you had the opportunity.
We're trying, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be better next time.
It'll be better.
And I think this was new, Mike, this was new, is that correct?
Correct.
So I think there's things to work out.
Yeah, always good to ask clarifying questions about what policies and procedures we're following, though.
Correct.
Perfect. Then there's no feelings involved, it's just matter of fact.
All right, we're good?
Good.
All right.
All right.
Are there any other reports by members of the board? About district and program highlights?
I got nothing.
What about softball team?
Yeah. Oh, yes, that was very exciting. They did great, we're very proud of them.
Get to the final four.
I know. They were, they well represented us, Spark.
Impressive that they got.
Yeah.
Akana was one of the best girls softball teams I've seen in a long time.
They are very good.
Wow.
Ours was. Yeah.
Their last year.
Right.
I don't know who won last year, though.
Kukana.
Yeah, they were very good.
Anything else, any other one, anybody else of district and program highlights? About consideration of bills and pre-approved bills?
Move to approve.
Second.
Should we pay them?
Pay the bill.
Pay the bills.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion. There are none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is. Any comments by members of the public?
I got nothing.
All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Glenn, I'm gonna have some.